All this meeting, we'll have to argue for the monthly meeting of the Pong City Public Schools Board. We'll start with, uh, Maxwell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we come together at this May School Board meeting, let us offer a prayer for a summer filled with joy and rejuvenation for our students and staff. May this break be a time of rest, adventure, and cherished memories. Let's also extend our deepest appreciation to our retirees for their invaluable contributions to our community. May they be blessed with fulfillment and happiness in their new journey. With gratitude and well wishes, let's embrace the opportunities that lie ahead. Remember, once a Wildcat, always a Wildcat. Amen.
Robin Riley, Anna Roland, Judy True, from the Chief here.
We did have a forum so the meeting will become official. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of recognition to the retiring. Says on my document that the President of the Board will preside since Don Newton is the President here. Mr. Adam Winnie, it is up to you.
Very good. Thank you Chair Riley. Retirees, we are so excited to honor you and your commitment to Pong City Public Schools. Jason, if you'll come up to the front, he's going to hand you a clock and I get to read. I had to scale some of these back. I've got some good stories from some folks. But since this is a public meeting of the community, I thought I had to scale it back just a little bit. On what's appropriate and what's not. Our first retiree is Ellen Edwards from Pohei. So Ellen has worked with Pong City Public Schools since 2020. You guys can take a picture of the other. But I have had the pleasure of working with Ellen since 2013 in our days at the University Center. Ellen has a heart for students and has always poured her heart into each student she comes into contact with. She's the junior, or she's actually the counselor, high school counselor for my daughter Annie at the high school. And she tells me all the times that she gets to sit and visit with Ms. Edwards and how great she is. Ellen's also an avid O S U fan, something I love, Gil Pope, and a huge supporter of our Wildcats. She loves her two dogs and her husband Wayne, in that order. But I will get, I will miss seeing Ellen and getting a hug each time I walk through the high school. Congratulations to Ellen and may retirement be the most amazing adventure yet. Next is Ms. Terry James. Terry, you'll have to forgive me. I had to double check my facts here. Terry started in 1981 at Jefferson First Grade, and then she taught first grade at Union and a stint in the kindergarten center. Now where was the kindergarten center at Pong City Public Schools? Wow, the Marlon Mansion for five years. There you go. So duty was mine. She's taught at Liberty and since 2008 has spent the remaining time at Woodlands in teaching first grade. Terry will miss seeing helping her students succeed, mentoring new teachers, giving all staff members a friendly greeting every day, jumping in to help whenever someone needs it, building furniture for her classrooms, and being the go-to for any tool or supply anybody needs. Also having the keys to the school. She will not miss getting to school before six every morning. Meetings, especially board meetings, special events that mess with their classroom schedule, and anything that publicly draws attention to her such as this retirement. Congratulations, Terry. Thank you. All right, Ms. Cindy John Rose. Cindy served with the district in 2005 as a class size assistant at Union. In 2006, she taught fifth grade at Woodlands, and then she taught third grade until 2020. Since then, she's served as an interventionist and instructional coach at Woodlands Elementary. Cindy is the perfect blend of compassionate, and this is not my word, and snarky. Since stepping into the role of instructional coach three years ago, her eyes light up the most when she's asked to teach a lesson in a class or cover a class for a few minutes. She loves her job, but misses those fun and special times in the classroom. She enjoys helping with special events and weekly features such as Veterans Day Assembly, Tunnel Run, Ride About at Wednesday, and Student Roar Awards. If you ask her really nicely, she might even do the chicken dance for you. Congratulations, Cindy. Next we have Martha Long. Martha has been a bus driver for Pong City Public Schools since 2000. Martha has started each of the mornings and days with a warm smile and a safe journey for every child that she serves. Martha, as you shift gears into retirement, that's my pun, never my pun name. May your days be filled with the same joy and peace you've provided for so many years. Dr. Hawkins told me that you and her, that her first drive, Dr. Hawkins only forgot one kid over the bus. No, but we do want to hope you enjoy every adventure that lies ahead, just as you've helped our children start their own adventures. Happy retirement. Next is Ms. Tina Mance. So Ms. Mance started with our district in 2000, teaching fifth grade at Lincoln where she has taught ever since. Personally, I first met Ms. Mance playing Little League baseball with her son Nick. She was an outstanding mom that always had our backs. Ms. Hardgraves, who is her principal, was a partner teacher with Ms. Mance for six years at Lincoln. Ms. Hardgraves said, "I've also been her principal for 10 years." Ms. Mance is an amazing teacher who always has high expectation for all of her students. Those expectations are set for academics as well as behavior. The students of Ms. Mance have shown a great deal of growth and progress in reading, writing, math, and behavior. Lincoln has been very lucky to have such a teacher and she will be truly missed. We wish her the best in her retirement. Thank you, Ms. Mance. Lisa Payne.
Ms. Payne started as a library TA for our district in 1988 and then became a teacher at West, or East, excuse me, in 1990. One of the teacher's favorite memories was during COVID times. Teachers reported with their own children, but students were not in the building. We would spend our morning making videos and emailing students, but Lisa often had craft time and math work time with our childrens that they had something to look forward to. She would even come up with crafts for the adults to do if we wanted. It helped keep our spirits up and gave us time outside of our four walls of isolation during those times. Another fun story, this was hilarious, I thought. Lisa and I have shared many memorable experiences over our years at East, but the one that stands out the most was at the conference, in the Istir Google Conference. During a collaboration meeting after a long day of breakout sessions, we all brought snacks to enjoy while we met through the brief. Someone had trail mix to snack on. Lisa made sure to eat all the trail mix and lovingly left all the raisins for the rest of us. Thank you, Lisa. Congratulations on your retirement. The next, I don't want to do this one. Tony Smith. Tony started with Pong City Public Schools in 1990 as a carpenter. Since then, he was promoted to foreman and then director of maintenance. Tony was the one person I never wanted to get a text from after hours around the meeting. When he did message or call, it was usually a building full of water. I remember the weekend of homecoming, standing in front of the high school saying, "Tony, did you ever want to pick up the front of the high school the week of homecoming?" He said, "Nope, but we're going to." "Tony, your dedication to keeping everything running smoothly has been the foundation of our success. As you retire, know that your hard work and commitment have left a lasting impact on this district. May your retirement be filled with relaxation, happiness, and the satisfaction of a job well done, and may another, may never another water sprinkler break in our time." "Thank you for your years of service and making sure no detail is overlooked. Wishing you all the best and well deserved retirement, Tony."
Thank you very much.
Our next retiree is Leanne Smith Parry.
One of the great stories I got back. Well first, Leanne started teaching for us in 1988 and has been in the English department since at Pohei, so that is incredible. One time, years ago, the Pohei Corral did not sing the Carol of the Bells at the faculty Christmas breakfast. Later that day, I got an email from Ms. Parry explaining how things were going to be in the future. So every year, I dedicate that song to her. This is, this is also very touching. This is my first year to teach at Pohei, but I have enjoyed her wisdom and encouragement as the English department head. She's made my first year at Pohei a wonderful experience, and she is the reason I want to continue to be a teacher. She is a great, she is great to share a baked treat for every holiday, and she's leaving some pretty big shoes to fill as the English department head. Thank you, Ms. Parry.
Nancy, Anna, come here. These are all my kids. Jack, and Nancy, and Anna, I all have a class, but could you take a picture of them? Amber. If I can walk, you can.
Our next one is Kathy Swinson. Kathy started with us in 1985 as the custodian at West Middle School and has been the custodian of the administration building here since 2016. When I personally started at West in 2003, Kathy was there and quick to show me the ropes. Kathy has had a tough job keeping our second largest school running smooth and then now to ensure our administration building is always ready for whatever throws our way. From meetings, trainings, hosting receptions, Kathy's always behind the scenes to ensure all things are running smoothly. To top it all, Kathy's also very busy in keeping Jerry in line. We wish you well, Kathy, and thank you for all your help. All right, last but certainly not least, Ms. Cynthia Winterode. Cynthia wanted to do this, so she, this is her second time to retire with Pong City Public Schools. Right, let's do it for three. Listen to this, folks. Cynthia Winterode started with us in 1977. She's been a force at West Middle School through those whole times. I used to be Cynthia's principal at West, and I would ask Cynthia jokingly. I'd say, "Cynthia, am I the best principal you've ever worked with?" And she said, in all seriousness, "You're not the worst." All right, I have to lift this up. Did this. We've had one librarian at West with Cynthia. In that same time span, we've had nine different superintendents. Alan Ross and Larry Ross and Joe Server, Tom Smith, Winona Nguyen, Bill White, David Pennington, Chella Eric, and now Adam Winnie. And Cynthia's original PCPS application, yes, I pulled original applications, I dug and evolved for it. This tells you how far the school district has come. The school district used to ask candidates to disclose your height, your weight, the church you attended, and the three books you've read in the last year. Times have changed, but one constant has remained, and that is Cynthia Winterode. And that concludes all of our retirees. Thank you, retirees. Retirees are going out for a picture, please.
We'll have the presentation of Employee of the Month in the Friends of Education. First award winner is Ms. Molly Smith, Employee of the Month, third grade teacher, named after me.
It's not. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I am very happy to announce that Molly Smith is the Certified Staff of the Month. And Molly is a great role model for the Wildcat way. Her work ethic is strong. She has a passion for education and is committed to teach her students everything that she can. Molly's continuous improvement of instruction and strategies is due to her limitless research. Part of being a good leader is being a good mentor to other staff members. Molly is the go-to when others need help or ideas. She models self-discipline, which is a shared value in the classroom that leads to students feeling a sense of belonging. Molly is competitive. She wants to win and encourages her students to want to win. This motivates students to learn in a fun and engaging way. She has a professional attitude and is part of the team, demonstrating how much she cares about the school and her colleagues. She has learned a great deal about education and shares this knowledge with all. Molly is a true Wildcat, and she's leaving, but I'm going to say, "Once a Wildcat, always a Wildcat."
The next award will go to the Support Employee of the Month, Callie Green.
And going back to Molly, I tell you what, she's helped my third grade teacher so much too over at Trout. We love you, Molly. Okay. We are excited to announce that Callie Green has been chosen as Pong City Public Schools' Board Staff Employee of the Month. She is a first grade teaching assistant at Trout. Callie has made significant contributions in many areas. She leads our book buddy groups every Friday, mostly time happy, right? I'll just give always. She weekly fluency tests our kindergarten first and second grade students, and she daily greets students at the front entrance. Here is where she shined, you guys. For nine weeks, nine weeks, Callie took the role of first grade class teacher. She knew she would not receive additional pay, but her love of Trout Wildcats propelled her to accept the position. Callie provided our first grade students with the consistency they needed to thrive, and the class continued to grow. She's been with them so long, she's been, she's just phenomenal. Callie's positivity and amazing work ethic has helped her build good relationships with her coworkers and all the students at Trout. She exemplifies the last three sentences of our creed: "We are a team, we are winners, we are Trout Wildcats."
Our final award winner will be the Friend of Education, Heather Lockston, here at Woodlands Elementary.
Woodlands Elementary School is proud to honor Heather Lockston as the Friend of Education for May 2024. At the beginning of this school year, our Safe and Healthy School Committee discussed the need for a crossing guard at the Woodlands-Wanito intersection. We put word out to parents seeking volunteers, and Heather stepped up. While she cannot serve every day, she faithfully serves every Monday and Friday afternoons, rain or shine, or cold or whatever else. She is very dependable, keeps our students safe as they cross the busy street, and always lets the office know if she has did this for some reason. Thanks for making a difference. Congratulations to Heather Lockston on her selection as the May 2024 Friend of Education for Pong City Public Schools.
Well, since we had such good award winners tonight, you all will follow Christie out into the hall to get the picture made. Don't get in the line with retirees. Nobody gets retired except those who are already on the road. So you'll go out there with Christie.
Laurie, did we have any comments? Moving right along to item four, reports for the potential award discussion. Follow-up on the comprehensive school improvement plan at East Middle School, Mr. Keith Crocker, the current principal of East Junior High School.
And I'm not Mr. Keith Crocker at all. He is not here tonight. Really, that was going to be a follow-up from our special board meeting where this board voted to remove East Middle School from the State Department list for accountability test scores. He was going to make himself available for a bit more data, but he hasn't come up tonight. So we can move right on to the superintendents report for the board.
No problem. Moving right along to the general report with the potential board discussion.
All right. Very good. The first thing I want to talk about is state budget. Our legislative session is wrapping up, nearing the end of the session here. Today, they had a live stream meeting, a budget between executive branch and legislative branch. So far, they've had two meetings thus far. It's kind of a theater when you watch it. It's really the executive branch putting the house in the center of each other right now. You can see the governors in the room, the Speaker of the House, Senator Pro Temp. The Pro Temp does me, the Speaker of the House does me, and the House Appropriations Chair and Senate Appropriations Chair. If you've been following the news, the Senate Appropriations Chair has had a kind of a mid-term shakeup in that seat. It was the new senator from Perry, Chuck Hall is now the Senate Appropriations Chair. He has taken over for Senator Roger Thompson. The Senate President Pro Temp took issue to some of Senator Thompson's dealings in the Appropriations Committee, and they were meeting the Senate also, and so in light of terms, replaced him and moved him on to a different group. So it's been very interesting today. Didn't really kind of go very far. We're kind of stuck in an impasse on the budget with the governor and the House with income tax cuts, where the Senate has said, "Let's take a more pragmatic approach and see where the grocery tax has gotten us so far this year." But we're kind of on stalemate right now on budget negotiations. We do like the Senate plan, if you're in education, because there's a few caveats in the Senate budget plan. That's one, funds maternity leave. They add $10 million into a revolving fund for maternity leave. Right now, that really doesn't have a funding mechanism. That was an unfunded mandate last year from the state legislature that schools must provide six weeks of paid leave, and there's no money that comes along with it outside of our state aid at this time. So the Senate plan adds $10 million into a revolving fund each year to do that. And then another $99 million, so the $99 million plus 10 brings us up to 113. $99 million in the Senate plan is for a one-time $2,500 support stipend. And that's not in the House budget plan. So the other million is in little programs for reading and safety and security. So it's kind of peanuts when you're looking at a $6 billion appropriation there. But we, as educators, like the Senate plan, but I don't know what we're going to get with the state budget moving forward on that. The other big thing that's concerning common education right now are the Senate, or the State Department of Education rules. It's kind of late in the year for the House and Senate to be considering agency rules. I think that there's been a big political movement to challenge kind of the rule-making authority of some of our state agencies, and our State Department of Education is not immune from that. The House will meet 1/30 tomorrow and sets that up to consider the new agency rules. What's interesting is they have cut the State Department of Ed's rules out from all the other agencies' rules. And so I anticipate there will be two votes tomorrow on the House on whether to consider or approve. That's either all up or all down, yes or no. There's not just pick and choose. They kind of pick and choose, I think, right now by dividing it as two different votes at this time. The Senate hasn't scheduled for hearing at this time, which is also very odd, but I would anticipate the next week or two because we are moving closely to May 31st. New laws signed. These are signed by the governor, and we've already taken a look at them in our district of how these may start to impact this for starting of, this first rule doesn't, or first new law doesn't start taking place until 2025, so we have a year to gear up for this. But we're going to have to teach personal financial literacy. We do kind of a financial literacy component right now, but this embeds it into the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and will start for the ninth grader century in 2025 school year. So, and it requires professional development. There's no funding that comes along with that caveat. So districts would have to provide some sort of training for teachers there. And it tells you there the kind of various topics they want to teach about mortgage payments, down payments types of mortgages, various interest rates and what ester means. I wonder if any of those were former realtors or mortgage payers that were at that wall. But interesting that we have a plan for that. Another one that counts, that is signed and goes into effect this next school year is anyone that is placed in DHS custody. Gives it more time to apply for the Oklahoma Promise program. And it also requires, eliminates requirements that program participants have to complete two foreign language or technology courses and one fine arts course, which is interesting. So you could technically have someone that qualifies for Oklahoma Promise that does not graduate because those are all graduation requirements, two fine arts and technology courses. Very interesting there.
Is that a state? All state.
All state graduation requirements.
They're working on graduation requirements right now. They're not signing the law, but I think they're going to have that removed out here pretty quick. Another new law signed. This basically defines what an athletic trainer is in a school district. Tells you what they need to comply with, where's license search and supervision. I checked with our one athletic trainer in our athletic department. We already meet, they see all of these requirements. So we're already in compliance with the law that was just signed. So I'm kind of excited about that one. Waiting to be signed. This is the graduation plan, Robin. This bill has passed both the House and Senate. It's sitting on the governor's desk, waiting for his signature. But I, at this point right now with the impasse with the budget and the fighting between the House and the Senate and the governor, I don't, some of this stuff could just fall off to the wayside. Because the Senate right now is asking the House if they will be veto-proof with them. So basically, if the governor vetoes anything, can they still get these bills across by overriding a veto? And the House is committed to that at this time. They really want to see an income tax cut. So there's a lot of negotiation and politics happening right now. This could be on the chopping block, or it could be a bargaining chip in the governor's office on if we get this passed or not. But you can see here that it's going to add fourth math requirement, and that also really has to include rigor above an algebra two level. Sorry, algebra one. And there's going to be some more work with the ICAP, which we're kind of currently doing in the district right now. But we'll see if this gets across. This would not go into effect until eighth graders in 2025 years, so we have a couple of years to be up.
Go back to that, and I thought that was the one that they were going to allow on the local school board.
This does give a lot more power. I kind of can summarize this. This does require a lot more school board local control over what defines, definition of those math course. There's a lot of different, they call it pathway units that they've added on there. We thought we were going to have some leeway with fine arts or with foreign language, but they created these pathway units that are going to be on there. We have a fancy little chart from COSA that we can share that has different options that students will be able to choose from here than when they get to high school in two years that we'll have to gear up for and ready to share with them. But this board But this board also has some decisions to make on what does that fourth math look like? Or is it multiple options of fourth math? You know, is there one, a math for college town kids, career town kids, you know, different, different math requirements at this board, which we have to be comfortable in how we staff, um, and educate our kids moving forward. There's still a chance that these ones, like I said, these are all, these are all passed that are waiting for either a governor's signature or just to get off the floor, both the House and Senate. They are probably gonna be used as negotiation tactics between the House and the Senate. The first one up there is, uh, the rehiring retirees with no restricted urban base. That would be huge for us, especially during a teacher shortage, to get some of these seasoned professionals that we just honored back into our classroom that they so chose. It just gives us some more flexibility if we needed to build some virtual spots. Senate Bill 1257, that would remove the district general fund carryover and penalty for exceeding limitations. Schools are facing that issue right now with the influx of escrow funds and we've got general funds that are kind of gotten bigger across the state for some school districts and they'd like to use those funds for other things. Um, so that, that would be a good bill for school districts on the local level. Um, RSA revisions, they're wanting to remove English for preventing automatic promotion. Uh, they want to kind of tighten that up, create some state mandated tests. That would go for third graders, um, that's on there. I don't understand House Bill 1028, I don't know who is doing corporal punishment with students with special disabilities, but, um, family central districts are, and this would prohibit that. Um, House Bill 3386 will create a lot of eddies where it requires a district transfer policy and creates a special transfer appeal process. I've already talked about that bill in previous meetings in this, uh, school board meetings. That, that would create a lot of headaches for schools. I still don't know how we can accommodate that. A lot of questions on the state wide level on special ed transfers, if you really still know what your need is and, um, and how do you fund that and make sure that you're providing the services for those students. House Bill 3958, this is the one I talked to, any digital communication with individual students must include the student's parents or daughters. Whoa, I don't know what that is. Um, except, extends communication as conducted via school group platform and requires, this removes the requirement for automatic dismissal. That was one of the provisions I talked about earlier in the meeting, that if a teacher was to email a student or message a student and did not include the student's parent or guardian, the director, administrators are there, but they want administrators to leave and write in their recommendations to the board, local boards. Um, I think it's intended to help prevent grooming or inappropriate behaviors amongst adults and students, but maybe that was going too far one way and would have created a lot of unnecessary bureaucracy or I'd say that would have put this board administrators in top spot and a teacher may have the best interest of the kid or, um, so just interesting. Deadline, what I can stop talking about with these legislative updates is hopefully during June meeting, I can give you one summary of key bills that are gonna impact this because Friday, May 31st is their last day. Unless they declare a special session, we really didn't come to agree with, which has happened before, but we'll, uh, we'll cross that river when we get there. Hey, this past month, I think you've read about this, Title IX guidance from the Federal Department of Education was released. Today was just a short, little document that we had to read through. Um, and it directed all schools to implement these new Title, federal Title IX rules by August 1, 2024, so this next school year. It was only 1,577 pages of regulations, um, so just small in the federal world. Luckily, we have some great agencies that can convince and break that stuff down so we can really know, uh, what really is applicable to school districts. Um, the State Department of Education and our state superintendent immediately filed a lawsuit, um, and then the attorney general as well filed a lawsuit unbeknownst to both agencies. Um, so we have two federal lawsuits against the state agency from, uh, when we did, maybe just had one, but I'm just a public superintendent in Palm City. I don't know what I'm talking about. But basically, it's asking, State Department of Ed's asking the courts to postpone the fact of date that it's unreasonable for us to try to have all of these rules in place and training of staff and administrators and teachers by August 1. Um, and the AG lawsuit there is basically citing that, um, it doesn't protect competitive spaces for biological, biological female athletes and that the federal department, the state, federal Department of Education is misusing Supreme Court precedents and constitutional violations. So at this time, the state superintendent has informed all school districts across Oklahoma not to do anything with Title IX guidance from the Federal Department of Education. The Federal Department of Education is saying, if you don't comply with this, we are gonna pull your federal funding from your schools. For Palm City, that's right around, I think about $6 million a year, $7 million with special ed and, um, all the other federal funds that we receive there. Uh, so we're kind of in this quagmire of do we are doing or not. So Jason, uh, is our Title IX district coordinator. He's been sitting in on all these seminars and workshops to learn about Title IX in the event that, one, there is not an injunction on, on federal regulations or, um, if there isn't, and capable is out, then we're ready to go. So, uh, there will be a lot of changes. If there is not an injunction by August 1 and, uh, or guidance doesn't change on the local levels, then we will have to bring to this board recommendations for, um, changes. And I do not know the full extent of the changes at this time, but, uh, I'm going off the State Department of Ed's guidance that just hold off until we hear the word.
Right before the 16th, state certificates.
Yeah.
Against the federal government on this one. So I would assume this one will end up in court.
So if, if we delegate the Title IX, if parent does or constituent does sue Palm City schools for not including the federal Title IX guidance, um, that will actually be the State Department of Education's lawsuit, not ours, because we are following State Department guidance. That's what our attorney representative is telling us.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
The board will have to finally say so.
Right.
On whether we follow the Title IX recommendations from the federal government on, which are pretty stringent.
They are very stringent.
They are a definite change.
They are very, very stringent. Okay, I want to talk a little bit, wait, sorry.
Back up.
Yeah.
You missed one that the governor signed, skipped last month.
The cursive writing one.
That's exactly right.
The cursive writing one. Uh, the governor did sign the law requiring cursive writing be taught in elementary schools. Uh, now, I don't say what the extent of that is, we're working with our elementary curriculum director on what we're, the guidance we want to give our faculty and teachers on. Um, you know, there are certain skills we have to teach every year and now cursive writing is one of them, but we only have 165 days of kids, so we've got to prioritize which, what skills are the most important to get to each and every day, is each and every week and each and every month. The cursive writing, they will have to go into that. They actually declared that a state emergency, so that goes until, let's say, August 1. So, uh, cursive writing is a state emergency, so we have to, have to teach that. Technically the line one, but I'm gonna say August 1. So I talked to this board and the talking to the community, uh, our directors have, we've been looking at Washington 3K. And we've been looking at Washington 3K to determine if, one, is the standalone 3K center, um, in the best interest of our community? Is it serving the intent this board had set out for our 3Kers across Palm City? And so one of the first things I wanted to do was look at our enrollment data. And so a little caution, um, I have spring and fall up until 2015, 16, and then it's just annual fall data, um, prior to 2015, up through this year, spring of 2024. So right now, at Washington 3K, we have 194 students enrolled. Um, you can see at the highest point in 2011, we had 361 students in role in our 3K. Now, this is a little deceptive because we didn't have Washington 3K until fall of 2016. That's when we had 219 students. So from 2016 to 2024, our enrollment, I mean, you can make the argument, we're kind of held steady, um, at 3K. My big question is, was our enrollment declining or was, uh, the 3K center just kind of a precursor to parents saying, no, we don't want to send them to the 3K center? Or is it inconvenient? We sent a lot of questions. So we thought it was worth exploring more and looking at other information. So here's our K5 enrollment. If you take the 3Kers out and you look at what the trend data looks like for K5 enrollment, same time period, same data points, you can see there, we do have a decrease in K5 enrollment from the peak in 2013 to spring of 2024, we lost about 500 students in our elementary schools. Then I wanted to look at, what does our kindergarten enrollment look like compared to our 3K enrollment over the last, uh, 12 falls? So fall 2010 to fall 2022, you can see that we just, we've always had a gap between the number of kindergartens we serve every year to the number of 3Kers. Ideally, you want to see those lines to be pretty darn similar, um, where those 3K kids going to kindergarten and the enrollment stays pretty similar. You can see up till 2016, the gap was widening. Then it looks like in 2019, we've done some great work in this district to strengthen that gap or close that gap between 3K and K. And then I think COVID took a number, took a big hit on kids going to 3K center, um, and moving on. So just, just interesting data there. The other thing we wanted to do was ask the question, does Palm City want a standalone 3K center? So K5 enrollment has dipped about 20% since 2011, and at the same time, 3K enrollment dipped 46%. We did survey parents in the community, we got 480 responses in our survey. Um, 53% said, no, transportation is not a barrier or inconvenience to go into 3K. I thought, I was kind of curious about that. 67% said, yes, I would like my 3K student to attend their neighborhood school. And then 60%, I thought this was interesting, no, my 3K student would not walk to school. Cause one of the theories we thought of is do they not send their kids to school? Cause they would have siblings to walk with or they have a standalone center, but even if it was in their neighborhood school, no, that 60% of our parents said, no, my 3K kids still would not walk if it wasn't a neighborhood school. Just some interesting data there for that. I asked our teachers in our sites to do some pros and cons of, you know, what's, what's a pro for having Washington 3K as a centralized site? One of the pros was all four-year-olds centralized at one site, no older kids there, that all 3K kids have an equal chance, all that going across the board. And the other was collaboration among the 3K teachers, that they would be able to share best practices, share strategies on what's working, what's not working, uh, lesson planning, um, just being able to align what we're doing district-wide with every four-year-old in the district. Um, the other was having a whole building with specialized staff that are trained in, uh, specifically early childhood. Um, and then the pros, we've spent a lot of money on that building. We've had the roof, we've had the bathrooms, all the classrooms, flooring, and playground. Not to mention that, I mean, I think we did a transfer entrance maybe five or six years ago there. Um, so we've spent some months as a community on that building. The cons that came up in the list from our sites and talking to our faculty and some of our community, parenting inconvenience, uh, parents that have multiple drop-offs in the mornings or pickups, um, different sites reported that, one, it's inconvenient when you have multiple drop-offs when you've got Washington or West and East or a couple of elementary school and secondary school and Washington. So it's adding another drop-off for a larger family. Pickup shows an inconvenience and I didn't think about this, but, and I should have because I have a 3K student, but, uh, we dismiss 3K at 2:30. So if you've got other kids that are in other grades that you have to pick up, you're waiting around until 3:10 or 3:15 to get your own children picked up when our 3K students are dismissed at 2:30. Um, PTAs, it was actually a con was, at Washington 3K, there's really not a chance to get an active PTA going because those kids are there for a year and then they're gone. And it's hard to get parent leadership and community leadership and buy-in to that school sites, uh, when those kids are one and done. Another was, um, they listed that they did have older student enrollment to look up to. Uh, some teachers reported that during the rise in sunshine assembly when they're watching brothers or sisters or bigger kids do it, or how to act, or what fun activities they get to do that really spark their desire to do better if you will. Um, and then transportation, other districts have practiced code on how to transport 3K students. Palm City Public School says not yet. And then I, I think that's something that, uh, really stood out to me is why I think some other school districts transport four-year-olds, whereas Palm City can't. I've been told it's a car seat belt, seatbelt thing, but I have yet to been applying the law or, um, regulation that prohibits schools from transporting 3K kids without seatbelts in the buses. So that's something we're still wanting to investigate. So I share all this to say, oh, oh, last one, and this is a big one, 80 days. 80 days is significant because 80 days until August 1. So if we were to think about shutting Washington 3K and moving those kids back to their sites, we have 80 days to get classrooms moved, teachers set up, um, which I'm not scared of, but it's just, it's a lot to try to rush into a knee jerk, um, moment. So something I would like to recommend to this board, you guys want to take action on it because it's just a recommendation, but, um, I think it would be in our best interest as a district to continue exploring why we have this 3K enrollment gap in our community. Um, I think there's three things I'd really like to discuss. One is, uh, how, how can we transport 3K kids? I think regardless, we need to figure out how school districts are doing that and be able to meet that need for our community. Um, two, if we were to close Washington, what's a good plan that we can keep that building still in use and operation and still serve our community? Uh, and then three, how can we increase our 3K participation numbers? Cause even if we have them in the neighborhood size or in, um, Washington 3K, our numbers of 3K students lag behind our kindergarten students. And we have to figure out how to increase our 3K participation numbers. 3K is not compulsory, it's not required to its senior kids, but I think it's a very, it's a credible opportunity to get those students the first successful little organization. So I think our district and our administration has some tough questions to answer. So at this time, I think that in our district's best interest, instead of trying to rush a bunch of pieces around, uh, we do it in a very pragmatic, principled manner and, uh, try to come up with solutions to these questions before we move forward. And the board is okay with that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Has the enrollment numbers for head starts and daycare centers been documented to this? Cause I wonder if that might be some uncaught four-year-olds.
Yeah, um, that, so we've had to ask, and we don't have those numbers for them, but we've had to ask for that and see if they would, you have to share them.
I just wondered if some of that gap might be.
But yeah, certainly, I think that they're, you know, it may be something that parents don't want to go 3K because they can't, they want to talk their kids off at 7:00 AM and they go to work instead of 7:45 AM or, uh, they can't pay for their kids to, I know we have PAC here, but, um, maybe they didn't get the PAC here, they, you know. So we just have, we don't know the answers to those questions yet. I think it's a noble pursuit and a good discussion to continue to explore. But I didn't mean to cause a bunch of community anxiety with it, but I do think it's important that this board is strategically thinking long-term about how we're best serving our kids.
So are you wanting the board at the next meeting to make a decision?
On, on the Washington 3K?
On the recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I, that would be wonderful. Or if you guys want to thumbs up it and say, we're gonna keep exploring it, then we can just continue. Or, no, I, I just, I don't, I think if we were to wait until June and this board says, yeah, we want to move, I would now give you guys a good plan. I don't think we could. You would have to say we want to move, um, 2025, because we will have to, for, keep going the way it is to do it effectively. Otherwise, we're just gonna have a mess all type of mess.
I think the board needs to decide one way or the other, to either take the recommendation or to go the other way.
Perfect.
Oh, sorry, I mean, and I think it'll probably have to be at the next board meeting.
Yeah.
When we have to decide that.
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't like profit with one way or another. But I think in fairness, we can't just continue on with the recommendation. We either need to approve the recommendation or approve.
I got it.
Do you have to approve the recommendation by now or is it not going to support?
Yes, on something of this magnitude, the board would have to approve whether we would want to go back to the regular schools or not.
So even on a sitting act as, as a 3K site, you would still have to make?
Well, we have to approve moving to a 3K back in 2015.
Right, I was interested, uh, you need to call here.
Yeah.
I don't know if you even have to, I mean, if the board is okay with leaving it as is for the next school year, I think we have plenty time to, if we wanted to discuss this more in fall. If, we need to break more data to the board, um, that shows we've got more input.
How long have you visited?
Since two thousand sixteen.
Sixteen, when you said two thousand six.
Yeah, two thousand sixteen, fall sixteen was your first, I, I think that's the first year, yeah. Yeah, the, uh, but I don't know, Judy, we've always had a gap there between kindergarten and pre-K, so, but that's something I, I, I don't have that information, I haven't recorded this time. But I, I want to commit to bringing, getting that information, doing our best to try to.
But my, my question was, do we have to vote or have, vote on the recommendation if you just, you were to just leave it as is?
If we're leaving it as, I personally, I don't think you have to vote on that. If you were changing, if you're saying the board needs to, once.
Yeah.
We would have to work out timeframe and all that, but I don't think, I, my recommendation is, I don't have that information or any of it at this time to make that recommendation, so. I would just continue to report, our administration is going to continue fact finding, gathering information.
Yeah.
If you all, if this, the data, they'll make a decision. All right, fun topic, dress code. So, one and two, in your packets, you're going to find, Lori made you a nice little handout there, um, with proposed secondary dress code changes. It's under the, is it yellow tab? Okay. I'm not gonna post up here, I'm sorry, public for the, not having it up on the, the board, but, um, the policies located in your packets are currently well, not well worded. It's a very flower, flowery worded policy, um, lots of rationale, lots of descriptors about why dress code is important and, um, how we should comply. And we don't like it, it, it needs to be updated. It's actually really bad, um, a couple attorneys have looked at our previous dress code. It singles out one sex or one gender over another, um, and kind of puts the district at risk on how we do dress code. There's no doubt that we do need to revisit our dress code policy in our district because, um, I think that it's a good time with new secondary administration coming in, eighth grade and high school. And we start off with a clean slate on how we do dress code. So, um, you can look at the original version and if you go to the revised version, I can give you all. So, current policy is in red at the top, but if you go to the changes to policy, we're basically omitting that whole, I don't know, half a page of rationale. And instead of saying code on student attire and grooming for the senior high and secondary students, we're just going code on student attire and grooming. We're just making this a broad change to district policy. Basically, if I was to sum up the policy, it's make sure your kids are covered up like in the school. We're not seeing anything that would make, uh, adult uncomfortable.
I think it's more of a distract, not distract from the learning process or.
Yeah, so, you can see the proposed language, I'll read it. Dress and grooming should enhance the education process, not distract from it. Parent institutions are urged to use good judgment and accept responsibility for appropriate grooming and tire while attending school or school-related functions. The school staff and administration will evaluate dress and grooming and catch school students and parents when necessary. So, secondary dress code, um, number one, clothing will not expose undergarments and must provide complete coverage. That's a big change. We've gotten real specific into halter tops and blouses and pants and weird, our new language is just, let's keep it short and incised. Cover up your parts, please. Number two, apparel with events of riding suggested logos, that was pretty much unchanged. We just can't have gang-related activity or, um, anything that's promoting violence or, um, ulterior or affinity. So, that, that one's still, right? This was gonna be a big one, caps, hats, visors, and sunglasses or other head coverings are not permitted within the school building unless approved by the school administration for, one, religious reasons and/or documented medical need. There is a feeling here that says, uh, school administration can't have a hat day still, that's still gonna be okay. But overall, this is gonna be a big change in high school, because I see ball caps a lot. They're gonna have to take them off and leave them, leave them in the car or leave them in the bags. They do have lockers, but I, that would be interesting to see a kid use a locker in high school, I haven't, I've never seen that. Um, stray shoes must be worn, footwear must provide adequate foot protection. Um, and we have, we have, we always get this brought up in this dress code, you know, discussion is in order to promote school spirit, school uniforms normally worn for extracurricular activities may be worn to school on days designated by the activity sponsor and approved by the administration. Another big change in this policy, um, last one, is we spelt out all the disciplinary steps, step one, step two, step three. We just made it real simple and just said, if you agree to a disciplinary action, this policy may not be much, so, we can tell the attorney group that. Um, the existing appeal procedures for disciplinary action. Essentially, we're gonna.
What would that mean?
We're essentially gonna provide students clothing, like a sweater or sweatpants, and get them back to class and make parent contact. But we're not going to try to make a disruption to the school day. Now, unless this gets a repeat that just continually violates the dress code policy, then that becomes defiance.
And then they just follow the student.
And then they follow the student. We're gonna try to get them in something, school issues, get them back to the class, um, that we can do. This last policy was written in twenty, two thousand four. This, this board reviews this, would be, uh, reviewed tonight, and then we would like to propose that this board consider adopting this policy in our June meeting. That would give us, uh, a good opportunity to start the school year off, get those embedded in the student handbooks at Ohio, East, West, and start the school year off with an emphasis on.
Did the attorneys or did the administration really write this?
It was a team effort.
Who did the most?
I don't know.
I, I think that the number seven, well, I guess the number seven, I don't want to talk about promoting school spirit, because I think you're right, there's a lot of, um, discussion on that. But the new policy, still, all of our uniforms follow, that clothing will not expose underarms and provide complete coverage. I think that that's what all of those, it's much more, um, it's not so effective.
So, we did ask for student input on this proposed policy and, um, they actually came back, they thought that hats would be the hardest thing to do. But they understood why, they just needed to understand why we didn't want them to wear hats, one of those.
I didn't know why, I had asked.
What did they tell you, Hannah?
Cheating.
Oh, cheating? No, I was more for identifying students and being able to, you know, if there are hats on cameras and, you know, identifying students from buildings. So, cheating, I am. Well, uh, we, we don't want hats or hoods, I mean, distracts from.
So, they have hoodie on your top clothes, do you?
I have hoodie, yeah.
So, hoodies can be worn?
Hoodies can be worn, hood on your head can't be worn. Yeah, like if you've got your hood up over your head and you got pulled down on your eyes, your headphones in, yeah, that's probably not gonna work.
Well, number four, what's the definition of stray shoes?
Something that provides adequate foot protection. And it's still gonna be broad, uh, we're gonna have to be broad, we're not gonna get into.
Do tennis shoes count?
Tennis shoes count, yes.
And why didn't you say it?
Because we are trying to eliminate words out of the policy book. We went down from two pages to half a page for dress code.
But you have too many attorneys involved.
Make it shorter, I think we have two good administrators involved to make it shorter like that.
I like it, it's really good.
So, I, I don't disagree with it, but why aren't we enforcing existing policies?
I think the existing policy puts us in a wa, a bad position. Our existing policy requires us to measure females from the knees to their hemline. And as a pagan male, you can't afford, I won't do it, I'm not gonna put a ruler on his ladies' skirt and need to make sure that's made of dye. I just think we're, I'm not gonna be the cleavage police. Uh, we're not gonna be in the game of the necessary cleavage, we're just not doing that, we can't do that. It's just not something we need to get into. We're not gonna put our fingers on shoulders and make sure straps are three fingers wide. It's just, the whole policy would put a lot of, um, educators out of work. We can enforce it, it's unenforceable.
Well, this policy was not enforceable at all, as given our staffing situation, but I think it says, and the whole point is to keep students in school. And the third defense is to send them to ISD, and the fourth defense was to suspend them.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Our goal is that we just want them to come to school properly dressed, and if they're not, we'll give them alternative options.
They're, they're gay.
That's not embarrassing, it won't be like, I have to go wear the black trash bag of shame or something. It will be, uh, it will be a sweater or some pants or some spirit. I know some schools that used to do that, and I was like, oh my gosh, it's awful, why would you embarrass them?
So, who's gonna be the clothes Nazis?
All teachers and instructors. Any of them. I like that word. We're trying to promote a strong, good education and.
Teachers, teachers can enforce it?
Teachers can enforce it, yes. As a principal, the worst thing you would get all day is someone sending you a kid to the tower saying this kid is violating dress code. And, yeah, there are four teachers before that that didn't say anything, so. All teachers, all teachers have to be on board with it, all principals have to be on board with it, and the community has to be on board with it.
I was gonna say, it'd be great if, like, from, from community, the staff, the students, to everybody, just kind of got that mindset that this is schools, we're going to learn this, what we're going to do over here. You know, and anything that distracts from that, we don't want it, so we'll walk our way, we'll not go to that. You know, I, I understand, but that would be best, you know, instead of looking around, who's gonna write the policy or, you know, all these things.
Well, I just, if this board is intended to set policy, my job and our team's job is to enforce that policy. The policy that, uh, we're bringing to you, I feel like can be enforced. If it's not being enforced, there has to be accountability that comes.
Perfect.
Whether that's with staff or whether that's with students that aren't complying with policy, um, if, I mean, we can, the real goal of this was just to review it, get some ideas, and then if we want to make any changes in the next thirty days, we will post these on the websites, and that way, if there are people that want to comment, they will go to call or email. And also, possibly take all the feedback on these proposed policy changes, but really, it's gotta be community buying. And I don't think anyone in the community would think that, um, they're, they'd be against, um, the dress and under new standards for our students, our schools. I don't think it's too restrictive in that we're requiring types of pants and types of shirts, we just want to come to cover up.
Right. Because that's what it's like.
Yes, yes.
That's true.
Look at those policies, look at policy over, like I said, there's, uh, the red one is the current policy, and then the green one is the new one.
I like how you presented that, with all of that, the old one, the markup one, and then a thing like that.
Thank you. Any other questions on policy? It's fine. I do think this is a good time for us to tackle it as a district, though, when you have a new high school administration coming in, new East Advent coming in. That if we just, if this board considers adopting in June, we'll do a big public push, that this is, you know, get ready, this is what we're expecting. And, um, if kids come home after their hats have been taken, because they were asked to take it off for a time, then you'll understand why. We're trying to set new standards for accountability, um, in our high school and east.
Well, some sort of center, we use our lockers more, thanks on that.
That's mine.
Should we work skirts and dresses to help create a least visible thing in line?
That's the whole policy.
Oh, that's all.
And we're getting rid of. That's in the green. You got one more? Yeah. This is the changes to policy, and if you go, one more. Yeah, this is the. Now, Judy, Rob, this might be a little bit different than Homer S. Anderson days.
I was gonna tell you, I was gonna tell you how they figured out if the skirt was too short, and you didn't, they didn't touch it all, you had to get down on your knees, and if it, you're.
Nope, not doing it, no.
How can you, like, listen, we just said.
We can't embarrass kids like that.
You'd be able to show if your skirt was too short on you, like, come on, one twenty-four.
You had to get on your knees.
I, just hearing you say it.
That was the rules.
That was the rules, what? Your skirt.
Your hair affects your colors, your, your eyebrows.
But you gotta understand, all of you wear wear skirts and dresses, all of us, so.
You hope so. Make sure, make sure they accept. So, seven twenty-two, the green new policy is the whole policy?
In fact.
Correct. That's what we would, right?
Yeah. Yes, sir. So, we'll, we'll review that, we'll get that put on the website as well. All right.
Did you have to, no?
Yes.
What did they say to them?
The hats were, there was another line that we had in the proposed policy for excessively tight clothing, and they said define that, and none of us were able to do a good job of defining it. So, we just struck that out, um, because, I mean, in my head, I can finally describe this, that I can show you pictures, which says we're tackling, you guys don't cover it, so. So, we stripped that off.
I think it's still covered, I mean, that one.
The bottom line is that it's distracting to the educational process, we're calling everyone out to address it. We will get into this. Right, right, and we, I think we have enough community contacts and support to help with that. And it's something that wouldn't be embarrassing if it related to a family or child or.
But if you don't put something about tight clothing in there, are we gonna just accept tight clothing?
There's some tight clothing that's.
There's, so, here's where I fell into the trap, Judy, is leggings. You know, uh, that's such a, seems kind of the mainstream now, and I think we would be sending, I don't think we have enough pants in the school to.
Well, I mean, if you have a shirt, we have to cover the, uh, areas if you're wearing leggings, if you're gonna.
This is where a district needs to, it just does, it just, it's going to, uh, ultimately have to be a team decision of parents and principals and teachers, but, that's why we thought excessively tight clothing was just getting too in the gray, that we were, you know, we were in an interpretation battle with it, so we just want to make sure your parts are covered.
So, were you allowing leggings on?
Yes.
What was the question?
Are we allowing leggings? Yes.
They have, they follow the new.
They would follow the new policy.
It'll be tight clothing, though, wouldn't you?
We don't have that on there, we struck that out, excessively tight clothing, in the new, in the new policy. And that was, that was the story, because the students asked, can we define that for us? It was something more reward than that, but there was a decision. I will.
Clothing will not expose underarm, underarms, then, underarms again. Clothing will not expose underarms and must provide complete coverage, leggings do both. As long as it doesn't have given us the right information. What, Rob, sorry, I have another question. No, it says can't show other victims, I suppose.
I've lost some more here. I'm moving on, notable notes. Um, walk the halls and go across the district, that's a. Um, walk the halls and going across the district, that's a fun tradition with the seniors, today we did Lutheran and McCord elementary graduates, and it was a great, very little bit there. Next week, we've got all the remaining elementary schools, we actually did Kildare this year, uh, we have a couple few of Kildare grads, um, coming with us. Parking and graduation, Callie, I wanna make sure I say this, that it is, parking is going to be a mess at graduation. We have an indoor facility, uh, and athletic field, that's all under construction, and typically we have people that park there. Um, I'm recommending that folks can park at Edlin Fair, though, if the school's done that, it's gonna be a little bit of a walk, or Fifth Street Park, um, or I, other than that, you're gonna probably have to walk a little bit to get to graduation, so. Um, spots are limited, and we want a big crowd, but I just, but construction comes in convenient, so, uh, just prepare yourself for the Facebook angry people, because they will be angry, but it's nice to handle it. Um, seniors have gotten all the rate out tickets, each senior was issued six tickets, and there is a forty percent chance of a riot right now, so. In the morning. In the morning, so, uh, I wanna make sure that that's out there too, that all seniors have received those, and there's no reprinting of it anymore, I mean, they have to sign off, and they are numbered tickets, so. I was told, I've never had the experience of rate out graduation, but this is also my first year superintendent, and, you know how that's going, so, uh, forty percent chance, right now, right. Other great thing, start of education begins this month, we're excited about that, since it's right at the last week in May. We've currently hired, this quarter, twenty-five new employees, um, right now, we have openings, uh, for principal, Washington Prep, assistant principals at East and the high school, counselors at the high school. We also need teachers, child nutrition, and transportation, twenty-four certified openings at this time, so if we staff up, we'll have forty-nine new hires this time next year, no one else leaves before, uh, the end of June, but we know it right now, it's reservation time, and people will be getting other opportunities, so. Uh, well, I'll keep you posted on those job openings. Right now, we are, um, interviewing for Washington Prep this week, and, um, how we said, assistant principal for high school, the interview. But I do know, we were talking, I also saw an email about Ag instructor interview questions, so we'll be going over those here pretty soon. We will definitely have two positions out there, one will be a certified opening, we're still looking, and if we wanna do two certified, or if we wanna do support, uh, at this time, and, uh, there's a farm hand perhaps, uh, but we have, there will be two people out there for certain, uh, moving forward. We just have a couple logistics, but, uh, and then the special event this Friday, if you have not heard, the Popeye Hall of Fame is hosting Mike Vetter, Popeye alone, um, at Pioneer Tech for a, uh, little Q and A and seminar, where he's gonna talk about his journalism and war efforts that he's been a part of, and international broadcast. And they have a great N C, I've been told, um, that's gonna be leading that panel discussion, that's your superintendent of public schools, um, he's gonna be doing the Q and A, and it'll be a fun evening, and lively discussion, so I hope, uh, you guys can purchase tickets. It's a great fundraiser, Popeye Hall of Fame, does award, uh, scholarships to Popeye grads, uh, three this year, I've been told, so, uh, this will help with raise funds for their endowments, and, um, be a fun evening, so you get to learn a lot. I've actually had an opportunity to top the mic before and hear him speak when he did the Hornets Nest movie premiere, Punkin, and, um, it was, it was a pretty, pretty neat evening, so. Hopefully have a good crowd, and if you're interested, you can buy tickets from Erica, wherever.
That's graduation, probably for Callie, this is.
Yes.
When will you make the decision whether it's raining or not, at the same time?
Very last second.
Yeah, so that's great, we actually set up Robson and Stallings simultaneously for graduation, and we will, I, I don't know, when, when do we normally do that, noon? I think it's noon, I have to go back and look at my notes, but I'm gonna say twelve noon for certain, we're gonna make that call. There will be a lot, there's, there's a lot of anxious administrators.
We have a tape now Friday.
Yeah, there's a land run on Friday.
They'll have press releases in the next week.
Yeah.
That will give information.
That's a good question, I, I know it's, uh, it's usually, I know it's the day before, but I don't have.
No, it's the day that's not the day.
See, I just messed up, don't put that out on paper.
They'll have press releases that, that'll refer to that.
Well, our new high school principal, Sean Pegg, tells over graduation, it just, I mean, that's just how it was, because he was, this is the principal, so, uh, he will get a press release to Christie, and Christie will get that to PC News and our social medias, uh, when parents would say through claims. And souls, and let's pray, oh, right, oh, right, let's give them graduation, they'll walk across the city.
Even if we get a little sprinkle, we can see you on.
Just get someone, how much lightning is too much lighting? Alright, any questions for me?
You're like a lightning rod on the stage, we don't like anybody.
I know, I'm sorry, you guys can sit on the stage, I'll set up the stage for me as separate, so you guys can get cheered, and I can take a boost.
No, I'm just saying, because you're so tall.
Oh, that's true, too. I won't wear my big metal eyeglasses. Alright, any other questions for me? Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, moving right on, item six, the spin agenda, which includes the minutes from the April regular board meeting, contracts in the green is under ten thousand, and surplus resolution. We, uh, talked about all the contracts under ten thousand, property finance meeting, and there was really nothing controversial about that. Put in our recommendations in the property and finance meeting, that, uh, we build with all those, surplus resolution, I've talked to Jeff, and like he says, we, after it's broken for four or five years, and he builds surplus, and so there's nothing that, that is really worth evaluation on the surplus for that. So with that, I would, uh, be open to a motion for item number six, consider.
Any questions for the first one for that, consider that as printed, or items one through three?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion on it? Call for the vote, Erica?
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Anna Roland? Judy Truitt?
Motion carries. Item seven, action items, consider take action on the following district financial reports, my compliments to Erica and Adam, we've really cut back on the B O's, of course, we're, we're the end of the school year, and we should, but they've, they've done a good job on cutting it back.
Can you write that and put it in the paper, Sharon?
Yeah, sure, just put that in the paper, yeah. They've, they've done a good job on that one. Uh, there's budget amendments, general fund encumbrances, for funds eleven, twenty-one, twenty-two, nineteen, twenty, eighty-one, and change of order listings, budget analysis report, bond funds report, booster club, fundraising requests, and it's my understanding that all of those is split on between this year's calendar year and next year's. Uh, activity fund request, same thing, treasuries report, how the state travel request, and ratification and approval of pay well, which is the most important one on here, to make sure everybody gets paid. So with that, any discussion or item questions on item seven? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve item seven.
Any questions? I'll second the approval for eight through N.
We've got a motion and a second for item one. Any last discussions on that one? Call for the vote.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Anna Roland? Robin Riley?
Aye. Motion carries, number two, vote to approve or disapprove the resolution for schools of library universal service E R A. It's my understanding that each elementary or middle school or high school has a different E R A, this is pretty much the standard form that we fill out every year, and if anybody's got any questions, Ryan, Judy, can explain that in more detail to us. Anybody have any considerations or concerns about item two? If not, a call for a motion. E R A. Okay. Second? Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Anna Roland? Robin Riley?
Aye.
Judy Truitt? Nancy Zimmerstein?
Motion carries. Item three, consider take action on application, participation in the twenty twenty-four summer food and service program for children, I think the key here is the federal government does keep P C P S whole, so therefore we are reimbursed. Any questions or comments about this one? I would accept a motion then, to approve it. A motion and a second, last change, comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Anna Roland? Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Item four, consider take action to approve or not approve the transfer of property on the pump to public schools to Mr. Justin Hotty. If, if you all remember, five or six years ago, we bought a house directly east of Roosevelt School, we turned it into a parking lot, and we paid for it. It appears there was a ten by fifteen little corner that had a shed on it, of the land that we did not, that we owned, and we did not sell it at that point in time. So all we're doing, and Jason and I have talked about this one, we're spending a lot of time, money, and effort to mow a ten to fifteen lot, and Justin Hotty was really wanting this, put a fence up, and he can't, because we own the land. So basically, it's one of those ten dollar deals, then we will give him the land, and then we will no longer be obligated to us. Does that kind of explain what we're doing? I'm sorry?
I said, yeah, it sounds just like it matches with what the voluntary system.
Yep. Comments or questions? If not, I would accept a motion for item four. Got a motion and a second, last change, comments or questions? Call for the vote, Erica?
Anna Roland? Judy Truitt? Robin Riley?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Motion carries, item five, consider take action on approval of change order number one for the basketball improvement project, this was the one that we had a water cutoff, and they had to cut the concrete, dump some gravel, wash more concrete, and it's about ten thousand dollars, and it was in, kind of, wasn't, Jason, wasn't it, kind of in the middle of the road?
It, it was right there, the approach is, that was the water main shut off for the project, and so, that valve hadn't been exercised in a really long time, and so, by us, by virtue with us doing this project, it was our responsibility to go back and fix it, and we had to put in a curving. We thought originally that it was just gonna be some easy side block, getting ramps, but we had to add in the small little sections for, uh, vision impairment, and so, we did it right, and we, the cost actually did get reduced, because it wasn't initially discussed early on, so. Um, originally, it was twelve thousand and eight hundred, and now we're down to ten thousand, so we think a reduction on that.
Does this would in turn make no guaranteed ma- maximum price of about ten thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars higher?
Correct.
Than it was before. Comments or questions concerning this one? Okay, we've got a motion and a second? From Judy. Comments, questions, call for the vote?
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Number six, consider take action on a bid from Proactive Air Solutions to install security film on Park City Public Schools elementary windows of yours. This is the one that we get ninety-two thousand a year, or three years, from, I guess it's from the state, isn't it, Adam, for security, and we're putting, it's not a bulletproof glass, but it's a bullet retardant screening on all the windows at the elementary schools. And they're taking ninety-two thousand from the funds that we get from the state, and then I guess the difference should pay, Jason, out of building funds.
That's correct.
Jason, any comment about what the next two years are looking for?
Um, so, so with this grant, it's a three-year grant, and each year of that grant, the district will receive ninety-two thousand dollars for security elements, and that includes such things like, um, camera systems, security film, uh, doors, locks, including access control. So we looked at, we, we've talked to some vendors about putting this out there for the high school on access control, because our campus is just so open up now with the concert hall, and that's gonna be utilized throughout the day, our weight training facility, and then the indoor facility, how, you know, all these kids have to get back and forth everywhere, and we still have to do our best to secure the lo- the doors and the locks, and keep the bad, bad out. Um, so, that's what we're looking at possibly for this upcoming fiscal year, for that security grant, and then the year after that, we'll look again at, at some more security film. The security film's really nice, 'cause it's, it's an added protection, and it buys time, it buys time for whoever's in that room to get to a better location, and have local law enforcement arrive, so.
But I think the key will be this, here too, is you all will make a recommendation to the board, whether we do more security film in some of the other schools, or whether we do cameras, or whatever. We're not obligated to have to do security film.
No, we're not obligated to that.
We get ninety-two thousand dollars for school safety, and, and there's particular requirements on what they consider school safety.
Correct.
I'll make a question.
Okay, have we have a motion, is there a second, Friday, number six? We've got a second. Call for the vote?
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Anna Roland? Robin Riley?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Motion carries, number seven, and I will give a brief summary of A through, oh, motive, I, G. And then we'll vote on all votes collectively, unless somebody on board wants to separate, have a separate vote on the other. A is a quote from Andrews Network Enterprises, doing businesses filtered net for the internet content filters, it's approximately seventy-one thousand dollars, it's a three-year contract worth seventy thousand amount. B is an agreement with Edge Skills for English language learners. Uh, C is a ratification of agreement with Galaxy Business, it's for the big printers, and, uh, pretty much, just most of, most of locations did that. Uh, D is a quote from Galaxy for software license for the full sixty-six stem, that's for the twenties software licenses, for the media players, that will let them do more, it'll just be a, a media player, for the stem lives. E is a quote from Imagine Learning for a hundred and fifty user license. Uh, F is a ratification of agreement with Kyler Construction. Uh, there are some things that you can only sign a one-year contract for, and Kyler, and I think we have one down the road for Rick Scott, also on here, we have to sign every year a new contract with these people. And, and, yeah, architecture is the same word also, that, that even though we're signing a three-year contract for some software, in, in State Ball, it says you have to, cannot sign on for the one-year, and so. So that is what F is about. G is agreement with Power School for Student Information Systems Software, fifty-five thousand approximately. H is Power School Group for E collect forms and enrollment. And that is. Total of twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, I is an agreement with Power School for online contract on board, in favor of signing of voice records. Uh, I is an agreement with Power School for online contract onboarding, faculty with signing of the voice record, that's what we're using that hopefully will get better results in the future for new hires, and that's thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars. J is a ratification of agreement, that's the Rick Scott that I talked about, uh, K is the winter brutality, and with that said and done, that is all of them, is it, anybody on the board want to have a separate vote on any of these? Okay, so I would look for a motion to consider seven, eight through K. For approval. Okay, Judy, make the motion, we have a second. Okay, last chance, if general comments or concerns, call for the vote.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein? Anna Roland?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Motion carries. Number eight, motion to vote to convene an executive session for the following purposes, is test of possible termination, reassignment, resignation. Personnel, in fact, detailed personnel reports in everybody's packet, uh, to discuss hiring high school principal. Uh, to discuss purchase and appraisal of real property. And to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney, concerning opinion claims without a motion, and move to executive session. Second? Call for the vote.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Judy Truitt? Anna Roland? Robin Riley?
Aye. We're in executive session. Okay, we're gonna return to open session, recital by the board presidents and minutes of executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk, and were maintained confidential. Eleven, number eleven, consider take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, reassignment, and employment of personnel.
I would like to make a motion, except I'd like to strike a name on the personnel report, it's Toby, tell me the last name, Rob.
Zornis?
Zornis?
Zornis.
Zornis.
You want to clarify?
He is not a current employee of the district, so then wouldn't need to be retired.
So everything else will be okay, on the personnel report?
It's under the West Middle School, uh, Zornis, B O R, yes, so, um, I'd like to make a motion for approval minus that name.
Do we have a second?
We'll see.
Call for the vote.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Just claiming, do we have any new business, none at this time, yeah, I would entertain a motion for an adjournment.
I would make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, you, you still have to have a motion, that you don't have to vote, you can just.
Julie said we could just plead, but fine. Call for the vote.
Don't vote.
Yeah, I think that, you don't have to.
Just a motion.
I, I vote, yes, for all of you.